Everyone, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Village Board meeting for July 25th. At this time, I'd like to ask everybody, please stand for the pledge and remain standing for a moment of silence for armed forces serving throughout the world.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, again, welcome, everybody, and we'll get right into it with the administrative business. May I have a motion to accept the minutes for our meeting held July 11, 2019?
Make the motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Dez, could you please read abstract four?
Abstract four contains vouchers 190266 through 190316, and a total is $266,939.68.
Thank you. Motion to approve abstract number four.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve fire department equipment request 2019-08 totaling approximately $6,894.82 for the purchase of a thermal camera for 503.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to appoint Charlie Newt to the fire police June 1, 2019 through May 31, 2020. This was done previously at a meeting, however, Charlie was not available, will take his oath of office within 30 days, so we're redoing the appointment.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Old business, hire an appraiser. Imminent domain law requires a municipality that is seeking to acquire property from condemnation purposes must in good faith attempt to do so without resort to a formal process of condemnation. Attorney Lynch has had multiple communications with the attorney for the property owners, and they will not agree to a joint appraisal. Given the resistance by the property owner, the next step in the process is to employ an expert to appraise the property to permit the village to comply with the provisions of imminent domain procedural law for the pre-litigation offer to acquire the property. The village must employ an expert who is a member of the appraisal institute and otherwise qualified to testify in Supreme Court a condemnation trial. The expert must prepare a preliminary appraisal report as well. Attorney Lynch is recommending the village board engage the services of Robert Moran, M.A.I., S.R.A. of Greystone Valuation Group to conduct an appraisal and prepare and submit said report at the cost not to exceed $15,000. Motion to approve this recommendation.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The HVAC at the work at the water and sewer garage, we had previously gone out for bids for the installation of HVAC in the new water sewer garage, and either no bids were received or the bid received was extremely high. We then decided to wait until the building was constructed to solicit quotes again. This was done recently, and four contractors were contacted, but only one responded. Therefore, we will be awarding the work to the one bidder so it can be completed before the cold weather arrives. Motion to award the HVAC contract for the new water and sewer garage to Mike Lennon at a cost of $18,200.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Correspondence was received from the AECOM regarding the project known as NIPA, New York Power Authority Communications Backbone Execution Plan for the Western to Central Southern New York. The NIPA has developed this project to protect the security of its telecommunications systems. This project will create robust statewide multi-patch interconnections between NIPA's major facilities. Due to the statewide scope of the project, NIPA has classified it as a seeker type one action. The village has been identified as a potential involved or interested agency. The board agrees that NIPA should be the lead agency for this project, but would like to be an interested agency and remain informed as the project proceeds. So may I have a motion to authorize the village clerk to respond accordingly to NIPA?
Make the motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Change order number one, Wygant Hill Water Storage Tank. Change order one for the Wygant Hill Storage Tank Project for the following reasons. A testing allowance was provided before the start of the work, and actual field conditions require different quantities of materials than those estimated prior to the work beginning, resulting in a decrease of $27,381.25. Two, additional coupling was required for a tie-in of the water main to the tank, resulting in an increase of $859.42. And three, a water leak in the area of the project was discovered to be an abandoned water service resulting, excuse me, in an increase of $2,224.47. So may I have a motion to authorize myself to sign a change order number one for the Wygant Hill Water Storage Tank Project, resulting in a total reduction of $24,297.36.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Yeah, it looks like we're gonna save a little money.
Yep.
And we're gonna need it to pay for the HVAC. Good deal.
All in favor?
Aye.
Liquor license, Palm Woodbury LLC. Notice was received on July 18, 2019 at Palm Woodbury LLC located at 448 Dunn Road, Central Valley, is applying for a liquor license from the New York State Division of Alcohol Beverage Control, State Liquor Authority. A letter was sent to the Police Department to determine if there is any reason why the village should object to this application being approved, and no response has been received as of yet. So Dez, could you please send a letter to the State Liquor Authority indicating the village board has no objection to the application, providing that the Police Department responds indicating that there is no reason the permit should be denied? Thank you. Okay, next up, we have a hold harmless agreement. I need a motion to authorize me to sign a hold harmless agreement for the water main work on Aurora Lane.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
It sounded like there was more.
I actually thought there was more, but there was no more words. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that conducts most of our business for this evening. But before we go out to the public, I just want to make a few comments. And some of it's concerning Facebook, actually, most of it's concerning Facebook. If you're turning to Facebook for information, you will most likely be misinformed. I've been informed that people are asking questions on Facebook and are complaining about crickets. Well, Facebook is not Alexa, so if you're looking for interaction from the village, you either need to call 928-7558 and ask for an appointment to meet with me, or you could come to a meeting and ask for information during public comment. Even though it's technically public comment, we always try to respond to legitimate questions. There was a resident that was on Facebook complaining about his water being discolored. His post seemed to get a lot of activity. Since this resident never called the water department, I can't really comment on the exact cause or resolution. I could tell you, we received only one call from Highland Woods Boulevard for discolored water. Even though this was a New York State project, we are sorry for any problem or inconvenience to our residents. The village used many resources to notify the public about this possible disruption, Facebook, village website, and Code Red. I should also mention that the water department was able to keep water running by bypassing the disconnection in the work zone by connecting hoses between fire hydrants on the other side of the work zone. Otherwise, there would have been no water available for approximately 24 hours in the affected area. Also, to avoid any confusion for some of our residents, I know we say flushing hydrants, but that really translates into flushing the system. If you have any problems with your water or sewer, you could call the water or sewer department at any time. There also seems to be some misinformation concerning the Osweiler Building. This is for the record, because everything I say or stayed here, I could substantiate. The village looked at this building at least three times before the town even thought about buying the building. We looked at it for the water and sewer department, we looked at it for the building department, and we looked at it for the highway, possibly village hall. The reason why we didn't get it for the water and sewer department was due to the fact that due to the bonding requirements, we had to build the garage that we bonded for, and we couldn't use that money to buy the building. So we scratched that. At first, the building department seemed interested, but then they felt it wasn't big enough. We looked at it for the highway and possible village hall. You know, we were toying around, looking for options. I did a market analysis on the building early on, and I priced it around $350,000, even though it was listed for much higher than that at the time. So being that we were going to do the extension here at the firehouse, we backed off. I was a little upset because I thought the building was a good building, and it was a shame to let it go. Next thing I hear is the town is in contract to buy the Osweiler Building. I thought that was a good thing. Then I hear that the town pulled out of the deal because of flooding. I thought that was a mistake because it was not in a flood zone, and the building never got water. Water did go into the parking lot during a couple storms, but that was it, never actually got into the building. Anyway, several potential buyers came along, and for whatever reason, they also pulled out of the deal, mostly because it was a non-conforming use, and they had to go in front of the boards to get special permits. The last buyer pulled out on June 17, and I immediately checked with my trustees and the highway superintendent, and proceeded to put an offer in on June 17 for $250,000. On June 19, I had an accepted purchase offer signed by both parties, the seller and the village, meaning me. At no time during that period that I had any inkling that the town was reconsidering buying the building, because they don't communicate anything to me anyway, so why would, how would I know? So there's also hearsay floating around that the town put an offer in for 200K. According to the seller, he never received no offer from the town in the amount of 200K, so he says he never got that offer. Actually, we had to convince the seller's attorney when we put in our offer. We had to go back and forth with him and convince him that we were a separate entity from the town. Apparently, they had bad feelings about the transaction they had with the town. I'm not aware of the details. I don't need to know the details, but they were upset about how it was handled, so I don't know how it was handled. But anyway, we did convince them that we were separate from the town, and we weren't involved in that earlier transaction. So I hope I put some things to rest. I think anybody on Facebook, if they have any questions, they could call me, they can meet with me. I'm not gonna deal with village business on Facebook. They could come to a meeting, they could ask their questions here, and I always try to answer questions. And one thing I'll say for the village, the village has always been transparent. I mean, we've had probably, in 10 years, probably 10 executive sessions. I mean, the town has that more than that every year, so. Anyway, so I'm not picking on the town, I'm just saying, we are very transparent, and I think for anyone to say that we're not is being disingenuous, so. Anyway, with that, and I'll come to the board members after, but first, I'm gonna go out to the public. Anybody in the second row?
Jeffrey's coming to help you. Jeffrey's coming to save the day.
Thanks, Jeff. I just want to say, Mike, I think you vastly overestimated the number of executive committee meetings that were held. I think you at least doubled it, because I can only recall about four meetings we ever had in an executive committee meeting.
Thank you.
And I want to reinforce, everything that the village board has done when I was involved and everything since the last six, seven months I haven't been on it has been totally transparent.
Thank you. Anybody else in the second row?
Chris Grauzano, Highland Mills. First of all, I appreciate your explanation, because that was gonna be my question coming up here today, because as a village resident, I was quite upset about the banter back and forth about the Osweiler Building, and I really wanted an answer, and that's why I came here tonight, and I kind of rearranged my schedule to make sure I was here tonight to get that answer. So I really appreciate the answer, and I really appreciate you putting it out in the public. However, I do have to disagree a little bit. In this day and age, where we are today, social media is an important platform, and if we're gonna post stuff on social media, you're gonna have to answer people on social media. I mean, that's just the way it goes, so I just want to bring that to your attention as well. In the modern age that we're in, maybe 10 years ago, it meant nothing, but if we're gonna use it as a method of communication, you're gonna have to be a two-way method of communication, and that's what I have to say, so thank you.
Yeah, well, the problem with that is it's unfiltered, there's no accountability, you know, so people say whatever they want. Most of the stuff going on right now is political theater. This happens every year around this time. You know, some of the people that ran for office used the water thing, and they lost, so, you know, obviously, most of the people did not believe the claims they were making. We get this from time to time. Every time the campaign comes by and we have candidates running, they attack us. They don't talk about what they're gonna do to make things better, they talk, they attack us on things that aren't broken, and it's comical, so, you know. But, I mean, I agree with you, in the modern age of, you know, social media and stuff like that, the problem is, there's no accountability, like I said. You got people on there that are just looking to, you know, create trouble and get things out there with no merit. They ask questions they already know the answer to. I mean, they're just trying to get something started, they're just trying to get a rise out of people. I feel it's not productive, I feel it's a waste of time, and besides, I don't know, I don't have all day to spend monitoring, you know, social media. So, I mean, if you got a problem with the water, or you got a problem with the highway, or you got a problem anywhere, you need to call, call the proper number. So, I mean, that's like saying if your house is on fire, you know, you're gonna take some pictures, a selfie with it, you're gonna put it on social media, your house is burning down, but you're not gonna call the fire department. I mean, this gentleman had some pretty outrageous pictures on Facebook, and yet, he didn't call. We did get a call up there. Matter of fact, we followed up with that lady today. You know, so if we get a call anytime, day or night, weekends, we'll respond, okay? And, you know, we'll try to resolve your problem. We're here to provide a service. So a lot of these people, we've run into this problem before around election time, where all these people talk about problems they have. However, we go down, we pull the calls into the water department, no calls. You know, this is all the time. So somebody's lying. I mean, come on, let's be serious. Now, I'm not saying this gentleman's lying, maybe he did have a problem, but if I had a problem like that, I don't understand why you wouldn't call the water department. Now, we went up there again today to that one lady, I can't mention her number, but she had a problem, she was very happy when we left, okay? I think the water department does a great job, and I mean, you know, you wanna attack, you know, me, you wanna attack trustees, that's fine, but leave our employees out of it, all right? That's all I say. Anyway, I'm not arguing about social media, but I'm not gonna be the one monitoring social media, I got other things I need to do, so. You know, I get on social media once in the morning for about 10 minutes while I'm having my coffee, and that's it. That's it for the day, I'm done. Post my picture of the day, a couple of jokes, and I'm happy. Yeah, that's what I use social media for. It's a happy place where you try to make people smile, laugh, you know? But anyway, that's my opinion. Anybody else in the second row? Anybody at all? Okay. Board member comment. Andrew.
Well, I've been on the phone with the resident with the water problem, so it seems to be persisting, and I'm gonna follow up again with the water department. I was on the phone most of the day with them, at least three or four times today, trying to get his situation settled. Part of the problem is, is our water and sewer department keeps records of phone numbers, emergency numbers, some of them are not always updated, so that's something we have to address in terms of making sure those numbers, that people can be contacted. They were calling the wrong number, I was able to reach the resident via social media, and then pass that on to our water and sewer department. So I've been actually looking at my phone, and he's still, the problem is still persisting. So it's gotta be something that I'll address in the morning, and leave a message at the water and sewer department, and let them know that they may have to just head up there and find out the root of this problem for him, so.
Well, they were up there today flushing the hydrants.
I know, they flushed hydrants.
And this gentleman still hasn't called the water and sewer department, so.
He did speak to them today. He did speak to them today. And part of that, like I said, that is, if you do have a problem, and the mayor is right, don't go on. Going on social media is like the opposite thing you should do. You should really, if you want to do that afterwards, I have no problem with it, but honestly, the first call you should make is to one of our department heads, okay? And go that route. I just don't, I don't know what you gain by putting it up there, all right? Luckily, I seen it and was able to actually respond, and as it turns out, the person in question, I had purchased their house 20 years ago when I first moved here. So I at least thanked him for leaving me with something that I bore two children out of, and, anyway. Quickly, with board comments, for me, I cannot figure this out. So Mike Pestel, who's a Democratic Committee member, is very interested on who is doing the Facebook page for the village. So considering that all the activity on the page has begun this calendar year, and that Jesus and I are the brand-new village trustees this calendar year, I would think that it was self-explanatory, but apparently, it's not. So for all those out there, and I'm sure nobody's gonna watch this, but I will let you know that I am the social media director, if you want to call it, for the village board. It was something we talked about on, during our campaign, is about being transparent communication, and CJ Graziano is right, it's a new dawn, it's a new day. Communication via social media is why we're on Twitter now, why we're on Verbia, why we're on Facebook, okay? It gets our message out. Besides the fact, I wanted to make sure, I knew how much work the village board does, and especially now that we've been entrenched here for seven months, but that was not what was coming out of our campaign, okay? And not from, not, meaning our opponents took a lot of potshots at the village board, and it's my feeling that I need to let the public know what we do here at the village, and how we do more than just come to these meetings, okay? It's much more than that, okay? In the meantime, if Democratic Committee member Mike Pestel has nothing else of importance in Woodbury, other than who runs the social media page, I think it's time that the Democrats, who are a very talented bunch in Woodbury, and they gave us a lot of support during our election, you need to come out. You need to come out, and you need to go to your Woodbury Democratic Committee meetings, or you need to call them out on social media. Because quite honestly, if who's running the social media page for the village is that important, and it's not volunteerism, or sewer capacity, or high-density housing, then there's a problem, okay? Democrats in this town need to look at their party. They need to look at their party and question the direction, if that's the most important thing on their mind, that one of their committee members is gonna sit there and make a post about who runs the social media Facebook page. Really? There's nothing else going on, because I can give you some work, so that's it.
Again, to piggyback off what he said, my campaign is also on that Facebook stuff. You know, we're here, like the mayor said, Andrew and I are both here usually most Fridays, so if anyone has any questions, if anyone is confused, as they say on social media, if anyone would like an answer to a question, listen, we're here Fridays, the mayor stops by, Tom Flood and Tim also come by here and there, we're there Fridays, most of them, and if not, give us a call, give us an email, we'll make an appointment, we'll meet you. Because on social media, what are you gonna get, one side of the story? You want it from the horse's mouth, and we're here. We have always been transparent, we got nothing to hide, and I'll tell anyone, I'd like to speak to a person face-to-face. As you know, he has no problem talking. I don't like talking in big crowds, I'm not a big person, but if you want to sit down one-on-one and ask you a question, I'm here to speak. If I don't have the answer, we'll work out finding you the answer. But I am not gonna go, as you see on social media, and go back and forth on silly questions from adults that are acting like children, and if not given the answer, throw a tantrum of why am I not getting answers, why is there crickets, blah, blah, blah. We're all grown men and women, you want an answer, come ask me. I'll speak with anyone, and I hope anyone in any way I can, but I am not gonna be here or take any nonsense on social media from anyone. I worked very hard to get here, we all did, and we're all working hard for this community, all of it, the town included. We are part of the town, the village is the town. When it comes to things, there is nothing to gain by knocking the village to try to make the town look good. There's nothing gained by knocking the town to make the village look good. We are all here together, whether you're a Republican or a Democrat. When it comes to this, I don't think that matters as much as the community itself. So if you want to stick to your Democratic party, and they're the only ones you want, then so be it, that's fine, that is your choice, but we are all here to work just to solve the problems that we have, and there are many, as we all know. So again, if you have any problems, come see us. We're here for you, we can explain as much as we have, and the information is there also, and if you have problems, there are four of the rest if you want. We hide nothing from no one, and that's it, that's about it. Thank you all for coming out, and those that come out, they get the answers from the horse's mouth. That's why these individuals that are always here always know what's going on in the community, and we talk to them as much as, because they have answers, they go, they participate, they get the answers that people need. So if you want that, then by all means, everyone's always invited. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have my own, thank you. Appreciate that. I don't have much to say tonight, I just want to... I don't have much to say tonight, I just wanna say, we just all need to get along, and political campaigns are interesting, you learn a lot from it. I actually like doing it for a couple of reasons. One, when you, when you campaign, if you walk to every house, if you like being a little overweight, you lose a little weight, and it's a good thing. And then you get to talk to everybody, and you get to really find out. It's interesting, as we talked about our infrastructure before, and we, we even voted tonight, we saved a little money on the water tank. I have to say, for the time that we've been here with Tim and Mike, that we've been part of the board, and Neo and Buddy, and David, we really did focus on the infrastructure. I, I come from IBM, where I worked in buildings that are very well-maintained, the grounds were well-maintained, and now how, how important is to keep things up. You know it in your own home, if you let something go, it costs you more money down the road. I think before we came onto the board, and policy back in the town days, some things that should've been done were kinda, the can was kicked down the street, and things weren't really maintained like they should've. We think, you know, I think, here, hearing about the man complaining about the water discolor, and I hope we fix that right away, and we're sorry for that. I will tell you, we would hear much more if we hadn't been taking care of our infrastructure. I remember some of the smart, intelligent moves that were made, led by our mayor, backed up by Tim and I and the rest of the board, on our sewer plants. They were in terrible, you know, shape, and not because of our department, they do a great job. Fact was, they weren't given the money to do what they had to do. Took some of those sewer plants, turned them into pump station, saved a lot of money for the residents with that. And overall, when you maintain, you do save money in the long run. We, we may not see there's a board that we had to spend it, but the fact is, down the road, the others benefit. And that's really all I have to say about that. I think it is funny, as Mike said, you hear these things that come out, and I'm going, I actually met a, a person who was politicking in a neighborhood, and I said, just curious, you seem, you know, kinda new at this, and I know I was, what do you know about this neighborhood? And I said, do you, do you know that we just upgraded the water, the water tank? Do you know that we've been working on the sewers? Do you know that we, been paving roads? He didn't know any of that. And I'm saying, why are you running? If, if you don't know, and you don't have a desire to know, and you don't have a passion for it, maybe this isn't for you. So, it's just kinda interesting. So, we hear a lot of things, and I hope it doesn't get negative. You know, we don't need that, I, I agree, Jesus, that it's a time in our community where we need to come together, and town and village, and things will be better off if we do. And if we get that kinda dialogue going again, that would be impressive. So, that's all I have. Tim?
Well, so, Tom, and you know, this is what I was gonna talk about tonight, and not unlike my fellow board members, I plan on being along with you today. But, you know, the infrastructure is not something that's sexy, it's not something that everybody wants to see money spent on, because it's not something that you can see for the most part. The exception is the water tap, but it is hugely important. And we dedicated a lot of time and effort in maintaining and improving our infrastructure, as Tom said, so well said, Tom, thank you for that. But I'm talking about something completely different, and two issues I wanna talk about tonight. First is, I wanna talk about the recent creation of several advisory councils by Senator Schmitt. I've had the pleasure of being appointed to three of those advisory councils. One's the healthcare advisory council, one is the first responder advisory council, and the third is the sports, the second amendment advisory council. So with regard to the first, I hope to use my thirty-six years of industry experience in EMS, both as a paramedic and as administrator, as well as my experience under board of directors in a statewide EMS trade association, and also as a delegate to the Hudson Valley Regional EMS Council, representing ALS services, Rockland County. To move the dial forward on state legislation that's gonna help the local community, now the past few meetings, we've been discussing volunteerism in the community, and how, how low we are with regard to the number of volunteers with Woodbury Volunteer Ambulance Corps, and with the Fire Department. And if this trend doesn't turn around, and this is not, by the way, as we've said, just a trend in Woodbury, this is a trend in Orange County, in the region, in the state, and quite frankly, the rest of the country. Services that rely on volunteers to provide emergency, critical emergency services are dwindling. And if we don't turn this around, we're gonna wind up paying for people to staff ambulances and fire teams in this town before you know it. I've seen it happen throughout the region in the past thirty-plus years, and it will happen here, if we don't do something about it. So I'm really happy to be partaking in these advisory councils with Senator Schmitt, because we're getting together with like-minded people from throughout his district, that can get together, we had a meeting earlier this week, both healthcare and first responder, to discuss these issues, and to try and come to good ideas and solutions that will help improve volunteerism. So, so I'm very proud to be partaking in that. And the second is, another issue, I wanna talk about the DOT legislation. I would've liked to have responded to several issues in the last meeting, but I had a critical work issue that I couldn't get out of, and couldn't beat it back. So there's many, there's a couple of comments that need to be addressed. First, Senator Scoofus had responded through a Facebook post that I had made after our June twenty-seventh meeting, I believe, stating that, no, you're incorrect, we actually first spoke about this issue on April eighteenth. Well, turns out, he's actually right. I still, to this day, don't remember that conversation, but I had somebody with me in the vehicle, when he called, and you did, and that's the straight-up truth. A couple of weeks later, I was having a conversation with my coworker, and I was relating what's going on with Barry, what's happening, because he told me about it. So Senator Scoofus was correct about that. But that's only half the story. The first part of that day on the eighteenth, it's my understanding, because I wasn't there nor was anybody else on the board, he had a meeting with the town supervisor and with Mayor Welly from Harrah. At that meeting, it was indicated to him that, hey, you need to reach out to the village too, because their involvement is also a part of that property, part of the para property, his village property, as we all now know. So, I can't speak for, for the senator, but I assume he reached out to me, because over the years, I have a pretty strong relationship with him, not just because of Woodbury, as a matter of fact, that's the lesser issue, the lesser reason why I have a strong relationship with him. I have a, a strong relationship with him, and with many legislators in the state, especially in the region, because of my job. I spent a lot of time speaking to legislators, especially during budget season, on issues related to healthcare. This year in particular, the state budget had slashed, the governor's budget, had, the governor's proposed budget, excuse me, had slashed millions, tens of millions of dollars in Medicaid funding for healthcare, all across the state. It would've devastated the healthcare industry, or the industry that I work in, the EMS industry. So I spent a lot of time speaking to legislators, both in their district offices and Albany, on the thirtieth, which was the last day of the session that the budget, before the budget was passed, I had no less than twelve meetings that day, in Albany. I attended a state joint assembly and senate budget hearing, budget testimony, in February. I even spoke, as Sandy, I've heard this, I even spoke on Maureen McNeil's talk show about this issue. So I was very focused on that, and this was described to me, as it was told to me, as a low-probability issue, that they were looking to, they were, he was working on a project, clean up the parasite and get it back on the tax rules. So that's what I was told, and that would be similar to the casino in Monticello. So, as I said, we spoke also about the reinstated Medicaid funding to the state budget during that call. My point here is that I was heavily involved in other issues, and I simply don't remember, and that's the truth. If anybody wants to call me out on that, I'm sorry. Another comment that needs to be addressed, a comment that was made by the town supervisor in July third, town board meeting. He quoted a text from me, stating that I was looking forward to something good in response to progress on legislation that would move this thing forward. And then he also states that he found, he finds it hard to believe, and I'm reading from this, 'cause I wanna make sure I get this right, that I did not, that I did not inform anyone else on our board about the issue. So first, I'll say that the day after I spoke to the senator in April, there was a newspaper article, which actually had more detail than the conversation that was relayed to me, that I had with the senator. So I had no more information than the general public, so why would I reach out to the senator and to each individual board member about something that was in the news, or, it makes no sense. There was no need for me to do that. And it was described as a long shot in that newspaper article. The first indication of the need to discuss the issue with anyone was on June seventh, during a conference call that I previously talked about, that was a, a conference call between myself, the senator, I believe, other staff members of his, I remember at the time, Mayor Welly and Senator Plazek were there. At that point, was the first indication of something new that hadn't been discussed publicly before, and that was, that as part of passing this legislation, which, by the way, we still didn't really know what it was, as far as passing this legislation, they, being the lawmakers in Albany, might request resolutions from the involved boards in the community to get this passed, because that had happened before. So that was a piece of information, so, as I stated before, as soon as I got off the phone, I picked up the phone, and I called the mayor and told him that. My responsibility is to notify the mayor, and that's exactly what I did. Obviously, that didn't take place, you would've seen or heard resolutions about that, but that's what happened that day. Sorry, I lost my voice. So regarding looking forward to something good, whenever we learn, whenever, whenever any of us learn about new issues, we obviously want information. And the information that I had, the information that was drilled into newspaper article, not into me, was that this is about a cleanup in the para, and getting it back on the tax rules, doing something good there. That's what I was focused on, because that's really the only solid piece of information I had. There was other information that was floating around, the DOT was talked about, but we had no information with regard to what the legislation was gonna look like yet, yet it passed. So of course, that's a good thing, if done correctly, and done safely, I don't think anybody in the room would disagree with that. So this issue was decided upon by the Assembly and Senate at the final hours of the very last day of the session on June twentieth, that was a Thursday. That evening, there was an online article by the Photo News that had a great deal of information on the legislation, again, more than I think anybody had known about before. The bill was very quickly signed into law on the twenty-fourth, which was the following Monday. Now, I don't know how much everybody knows about how state legislation works, but there are still bills that are sitting out there, that are on the governor's desk, that he may never sign, but he has until December thirty-first to sign. So it is my opinion that this legislation was driven by the governor, it was driven by no less than three senators, it was driven by the casino industry, in particular Resorts World, possibly unions, because union jobs have been mentioned several times, and maybe others that I don't know about. But I know for sure there were at least three senators, not counting the cosponsors of this legislation. We had a board meeting on June twenty-seventh, and I believe that I made my position with regard to this issue respectfully, but very clear, that I disagreed with it at that point with the information that I had. Now since then, I took further steps to learn more about this legislation. I got the bill numbers, I did research on the bills, I documented what I had come up with, and I, I took excerpts from the bill with my opinion on why those specific areas, those several areas were a problem, and I sent it to the rest of the board. I sent that email on July eighth, I think that it was. So the rest of the board, then, if they didn't have it before, they had the bill numbers, and they had my interpretation of what the problems were with that bill. One of the largest concerns that I personally have is the statement, excuse me, the section that states, and this is a quote, "Payments pursuant to the law will not begin until revenue has been realized for a period of twelve consecutive months." I believe the mayor talked about that at the last meeting that I missed. But the first question that I had is exactly what does that mean? Define revenue. Now, I was told that it, it, revenue is defined in tax law, but you know, I, I'm not an accountant, I don't really understand tax law. But my concern, and the reason I looked into all of this in the first place, was because the first thing I was thinking was, are there any gotchas in this law with regard to the impact date? Because a lot of people are focusing on the impact date, how much money the town's gonna get, the village is gonna get, and so on. But does that mean that after ten months, ten months of revenue, a month eleven they dip, and then they start over again, and then come the twelfth month? Does that mean the clock's gonna reset? I don't know, I, I, I simply don't know the answer for that question. But at the very least, if it's taken in its most positive sense, that means that nobody would see impact date until a full year after they open their doors, during which, we as a village, the town, and everybody else will be providing services to that new project. So nobody would see any impact date until after a full year, at a minimum, if it's taken at its, its.
Monticello.
While I'm getting to that, actually. So, and, and that's the next thing I wanted to talk about. As far as I'm concerned, the worst part about all of this is that Monticello, the town of Thompson, in Sullivan County, will continue to get the same impact date that they get now. Also, there appears to have been no opportunity for negotiation with regard to the impact date, and again, that's been the focus of a lot of conversation in town. There appears to have been no opportunity for us to negotiate, or to have negotiated on our behalf, the impact date, to make it different than what it already was. This makes no sense to me, it shows how the entire law is designed to benefit Monticello, Sullivan County, and Resorts World. In fact, the horse racing industry continues to get a percentage of proceeds, and they continue to get money. Monticello, even though that's already closed, I think it's been a couple of months now, even though it's already closed there, once it would start here, if it happens, would continue to get the same aid that they get now. And in fact, the, the reason that the village of Woodbury and the village of Harrah, they are only gonna get, if I'm not mistaken, I believe it was a hundred and thirty-five thousand each year, I haven't looked at the numbers in quite a while, in several weeks. But that's because the village of Monticello got that combined total, but because there's two villages here, we would get that split between the two villages. Has nothing to do with the impact of Harrah and the impact of the village of Woodbury and the impact of the town of Harrah. It has to do with already existed, with what already existed in Sullivan County. So they just transgressed the law. As a matter of fact, if you look at the law, and I'd be happy to give anybody the bill numbers, you can see where Monticello is redlined out, and Orange County is in its place. So they, they took the path of least resistance with that baby and everybody that was involved with this, and, and that's just not fair to us, because if we're going to be getting this project, whether you agree or disagree with it, we should be getting our fair share of impact date, that's what I believe. So, I believe we all must be open-minded and consider all solutions in the best interest of our village, without consideration to partisanship and special interests. Andrew mentioned something about this earlier. It's our responsibility, though, to communicate with our representatives in state government, as well as your responsibility to interface with us, to find solutions at the local level, which is why I maintain relationships with lawmakers on both sides of the aisle. It's not just about my job, I feel it's my responsibility to maintain relationships with anybody, regardless of whether they're a Democrat, Republican, or Independent, or undeclared, it doesn't really matter. I've spent a lot of time, since the law was passed and, and signed, evaluating the details and communicating with our state representatives about this. I've reached out to both of our state legislators about this. We as a village did not craft this law, nor did the town. And while I personally appreciate everybody's opinions about this, whether they expressed them on Facebook, they come to board meetings and talk to us about it, they send emails, whatever the case may be, I think what everybody has to remember is that we didn't craft this legislation. We did not partake in, in debates on this legislation. This was passed by the state legislature, and they don't have to have public hearings like we do when they craft laws. So they crafted this legislation, and within a very short period of time, it was signed into law by the governor. So what I would encourage everybody to, and that happens with a lot of other legislation, it's not unusual, this, you know, this is, you know, and again, I refer to the SAFE Act, the SAFE Act was a similar law, now it is passed. What I would encourage everybody to do is, yes, express your opinions to us, because we are interested, but research the law, come to your own conclusions, come to your own opinions, and then reach out to your state legislators, and let your opinions be known to them. Because I can tell you that they're not hearing from a lot of people. There seems to be a lot more chatter in our community than what they're hearing from what they've told me. I had two, three different meetings with Senator Schmitt this week alone, and we talked. In between one of those meetings, or after two of those meetings, a couple days ago, we spoke about this. And he's not heard anything positive from anybody about this from the community, all he's heard is negative, but it's not been hundreds and hundreds of people. So if people have opinions about this, especially if you have strong opinions about this, make your opinion known. Now, the last thing is that, well, first of all, your voice matters, and that's the point I was trying to make there, but the last thing is that while there has been slate legislation that would permit a project like this from happening in Orange County, and again, it doesn't specifically even say Woodbury, it says Orange County, but obviously, it would've been for the parasite that was part of, I'm assuming that was part of negotiations between the state senate and the assembly. Nothing's been proposed to any planning board yet, so there is no project on the books, and that's why it's very difficult for us as a board, or us as individuals, to determine whether or not the impact date is sufficient. We simply don't know, because we don't know how we would be impacted by this project. I mentioned in the first part of what I said tonight, volunteers. You know, this. You know, this could be the thing that tips the fire department over on its side with regard to responses. This could be the one thing. I mean, it's going to be this, it's going to be something else. But this could be it. And this could be the thing that forces us to have paid firefighters. And believe me, I looked, I did some back-end math calculations on that. And we don't even want to know what those numbers would look like. We'd much rather have volunteers. So maybe that's the one thing. I don't know. I also don't know what the impact would be to the police department, to the town. Now, while they're getting a substantial amount of money as compared to what we would be getting at the impact date, it might not be enough. It might be more than what they need. We don't know. We don't know what kind of project this is going to look like. We know what it's supposed to be now because the law's been signed and we now have access to the bills. But we don't know what the impact is going to be. So what I will do is, I would ask people to be respectful with regard to this issue to both us and to the state legislators. I would ask that you make your opinion known. And stay tuned and pay attention to see what happens. Believe me, when we hear about something, we will let people know as well. And if and when an application appears before a planning board, go to the planning board, listen, read the documents. And I know there's several people in the room that do that religiously. Personally, I thank you for that because that's a very, very important issue. More people would do that. But make your opinions known. And that's how these types of things get influenced. And I'll finish with this. One conversation I had with the senator prior to this that I do remember, and as a matter of fact, it was on the last day of session, I told him that when I look at these types of projects, and I want to make my own decision about this, I look at two things. I look at objective facts and I make my own decisions to how I think that will impact the community, like the Caesars project, for example. Initially, I was against the Caesars project, the mayor will tell you. But within a short period of time, I realized what this would actually be for our community and what type of project it could be. And then I supported it. And I was part of the negotiating team that was going to get benefits to the village. That was going to be a good thing for our community. But this is not that. People have been trying to make comparisons between DLT and the casino project, saying, "Everybody was in favor of that. I don't understand why you're not in favor of this." It's not the same thing. And we all know that. We will talk about this. So I'll leave it at that. And the other thing I said was that the other half of how I make these types of decisions is public input. Why? Because we are employed by you. I said this at our fundraiser last week. We work for the citizens of the village of Woodbury. You guys hire us for temporary jobs every two years. This year, there's another slate of candidates on both sides. So you guys hire us. If we're telling you what you want to hear, then you vote for us. If not, then you don't vote for us. It's that simple. So I told the senator that I weigh both things equally because when we hear from the residents as to what they want or don't want, that has to mean something to us. But again, we didn't pass this legislation. We didn't vote on this legislation. We have opinions just like everybody else. Thank you for listening. I'm sorry it was so long-winded. And thank you for coming out and having a good time. Thank you, Barbara. I know, I know it isn't, but...
Thank you. Desai, you have anything?
Yeah. In picking up some of the things that were said this evening, I just want to be transparent as well and to let the public know that myself, Mayor Quinon, and trustee Gomez had a meeting last week with the Orange County Department of Human Resources to begin discussing the formation of a paid fire department based on a letter received from Chief Plenum. The county currently does not have anything in place for this, but they're going to be researching surrounding counties to see how they handle it and get back to me with regards to tests and police departments. There's an A, B, and C based on population. You have to have a certain amount of policemen. You have to have a certain amount of titles. So they're going to look into that and get back to me. We're also going to be reaching out to the Orange County Training Center personnel to meet with them, to get their input and their thoughts. And we're also going to be talking to other fire districts that are in Southern Orange County to look into possibly doing something jointly as an alternative so that when the time comes, we're proactive in the matter. And we've done our research and tried to come up with the best plan that will help make sure that the residents are still protected in case the volunteers are not there.
Two comments on that. One, I find it unusual that there's nothing, and I'm not saying I don't believe you, but I find it unusual, there are two paid departments in the county.
Yeah, but the city's handled their own civil service. All right, that's fine.
Let him finish. But they're cities.
No, no.
I did ask that question.
I understand that they are cities. And Middletown is a hybrid department. They have volunteers and paid members. City of Newburgh is a full-paid department. And I was suspecting that they are hired as employees of the city and they are not hired through any other means.
Prior to going up to the meeting, I did do that research. The two cities, and it might be three, Port Hurst might have one as well. I didn't reach out that far. They don't, they're not handled by the Orange County Department personnel in civil service. The cities do their own type of tests and exams and whatnot. And then the only other town or village or district that has a paid individual is the fire department in Kyrstoll. But that individual is a per diem individual who is only paid if called on, I guess it's called a Sabbath from Friday at sundown to Saturday at sundown, or on one of the holidays that they observe and they are unable to participate in firefighting abilities. And they're capped at how many hours per year they can work. So that's the only thing the county currently has. So they are going to look into it and get back to us.
That dovetails to what I said earlier on. We really need to adjust the situation.
Was there a sec? You said two comments.
There was, but I don't remember.
Sorry. We are taking it seriously and we're trying to get all, everything lined up so that we're protected.
Okay, I just want to be perfectly clear.
There's vodka in there, isn't there?
Yes. That I don't want people running around tomorrow on Facebook, social media, whatever, Instagram or whatever they do, saying that Woodbury is going to have a paid fire department. This could be a year out, it could be five years out. But as I try to explain at other meetings when we, during political season, people love to jump on things and not think it through. We take the steps now to prepare for what's coming in the future. Because you just don't say, "Starting Monday, we're going to have a paid fire." It doesn't work that way. There's got to be tests, there's civil service, there's so much involved. And even the county is unprepared for this. And they're starting to research it now. Now, like I said, I don't know the timeline here. I don't think anybody does. We definitely have a problem with volunteers right now. It's across the board here in New York. I'm not sure about the rest of the country. I assume it is, but there's a problem. So the demands put on our department as far as training and things like that, you know, we have a bedroom community. Most people get up here in the morning and they commute somewhere to work and they come back at night and they have families and they have kids. They got to go to softball games, they got to do all this stuff. So when you got to go to all this training at night, it really makes it, you know, impossible for anybody to do. And that's one of the problems we run in. It's not just the fact that we don't have people that I think would love to volunteer. They just can't do it. They can't commit to their job, their family, and the training and the fire department. So it's an important thing. And the firemen we do have today are getting older and older and older. So we don't know the timeline and this is something we're preparing now. So when it does happen, or when it's about to happen, we're in a better position to deal with it than to be in a panic mode and rush out and make a lot of mistakes. We're trying to avoid making mistakes. So, yes, we are educating ourselves, we're educating the firemen. I mean, it's not like we can take the current fire department we have now and pay them. It doesn't work like that. It has to be tests, it has to be exams, background checks. It goes through a whole process. And they're looking into that now. So it might take them six months, a year, before they figure out how to move forward with this. But anyway, we're starting to work. And one of the other things, as Ray pointed out, we're going to reach out to other municipalities and see, you know, what they're thinking along the lines. And hopefully, you know, we'll get something, or get an idea, or some kind of model that we can follow. Maybe even reach out to other states. I mean, who knows? But I just want to make it clear, we're not hiring firemen right now, okay? Because I see how these things blow out into a life of their own, especially on social media.